I would like to call the Planning Commission meeting of July 12th to order. And I would like to ask everybody to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. And this evening, I will be administering the oath of office to our new and reappointed commissioner. So at this time, I would like to ask Angela French to please stand and Angel Olivera to please stand. And I'm going to ask you to repeat the oath after me. Please raise your right hand. And you will say aye and state your name.
Aye, Angela French.
Aye, Angel Olivera.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies
against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservations
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully
and that I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
upon which I am about to enter
upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, you are really sworn in and Angel Olivera, you may now bring your passport to the conference.
Thank you.
Okay, give me one minute, I'm just signing their official documents.
You too, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh huh. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that is yours.
You know what, I need to keep, Deisha, I need to keep those.
Right, they need to sign it though, right?
Oh, they need to sign it, yes.
This is history, you're witnessing, okay? That's why it's taking its long. Could you pass that down?
I usually say one.
Thank you.
That's why I did mine.
My first. All right, that brings us to our roll call.
Chair Naaman?
Here.
Vice Chair French?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Olivera?
Here.
And Commissioner Ward is absent.
I'll move to excuse Commissioner Ward.
Second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Commissioner Ward is officially excused from this meeting. Item five on our agenda is the review of the agenda by Mr. Rob Bruce.
Staff has no recommended changes to the agenda?
Thank you, that's always a good thing. All right. And then may I please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. That brings us to our public comments on our consent calendar items and any items that are not on our agenda. So if anybody is here to speak on our consent calendar, which is the approval of our minutes from our last month's meeting, or anything that is not on our agenda, please come forward and walk up to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes to speak. Okay, no public comments at this time. That brings us to our consent calendar. May I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The minutes from last month's meeting are approved. All right, that brings us to our first public hearing, item nine A.
This item will be presented by Justin Sauter.
Good evening, Planning Commission. The request is to the request is to construct a major communication facility at Desert Lawn Memorial Park. The applicant has proposed to remove three monopoles from an existing but expired facility and construct a 60-foot tall monopine, or monopole designed as a faux pine tree. Here are elevations of the existing monopoles and what it will look like with the proposed monopine. The existing, excuse me, the existing and the new monopine and the associated equipment will be located within the existing equipment The equipment enclosure is surrounded with pine trees that have a mature height of 30 to 80 feet, which will allow the monopole to blend in with the surrounding environment. The Planning Commission has three options tonight. Option one is to adopt the resolution approving the CUP and the site plan review and find that the project is categorically exempt. Option two is to continue item and option three is to deny the project. Option one is recommended.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? My question would be, expired simply means paperwork was not done, correct? The towers themselves, the poles have been doing their job, we just didn't have the correct
Yes.
paperwork on it?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess that's it for a while. All right, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this, please come forward to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes to speak. We do not engage in dialogue during this time, so whatever you have to say, if you ask questions, I'll write them all down and we will get them answered during the course of the hearing. So is there anybody here to speak on this item?
I'd just like to introduce myself, my name is Liz Desen, I'm here on behalf of Rice Wireless. I'm here for any questions you may have. We obviously need a site here, as evidenced by propagation maps that we provided to the planning department. We do think that this is the most compatible design for the site. We're taking away three poles and putting in one single monopine that will hold two carriers and can hold up to three depending on, you know, the other company's desires. So again, I'm here for any questions you may have.
So the capacity, removing, replacing three poles with one will still have the same capacity coverage for that area, correct?
Yes ma'am, for both carriers.
For both carriers?
Yes ma'am.
And I just wanted to make sure you have read the conditions of approval and you understand that if this is approved for the full 10 years, what the expiration date is and we can get our paperwork in next time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? All right, may I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing on this item is now closed. Any commissioner discussion? All right, I know, I did go take a look at this and I think the pine tree will blend in very well there.
I don't have a monster.
Yes, and yeah, I know in the past, we've talked about various stealth activity and stealth design and pine trees are not necessarily the best, but in this case, I think it's a pretty good solution for blending that in.
Thank you.
All right, may I get a motion on this item, please?
A motion to adopt resolution number PC 2018-024 approving conditional use permit 18-03 and site plan review 18-019 and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental proceedings pursuant to section 15302 class 2 of the CECL guidelines.
I shall second your motion. Okay, we have a motion to second, any further discussion on this? All right, we will call for a voice vote on this.
Chair Naaman?
Yes.
Vice Chair French?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Olivera?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ward is absent.
All right, thank you very much, then the motion passes. That will bring us to item nine B.
This item will be presented by Matthew Alcaron.
MD7 has submitted an application to reestablish an expired major telecommunications facility designed as a monopole within an approximate 240-square-foot equipment enclosure located east of the existing Walmart, shown here in the red box. The slide shows the existing cell tower approved under CUP 02-12 in 2002, which expired in 2013. The existing cell site is positioned along a row of pine trees with a mature height of 30 to 80 feet. This slideshow shows a view looking south from Avenue S. The new cedar trees along the east property line of Yellin Park have been sporadically placed and are only at a height of approximately 4 to 6 feet. And as you can see, the slide shows the cedar trees and they have a mature height of 30 to 80 feet. This slide shows the existing cell tower looking west from the Yellin parking lot. The site plan submitted shows the existing cell tower along the east boundary wall within an existing landscape planter, and again, there's red box. The west elevation shows the existing 60-foot-high cell tower with the equipment mounted on the exterior of the enclosure. And per condition, Nate, the applicant, will be required to relocate all exterior equipment to within the interior of the enclosure. This is an example of the cell tower disguised as a faux conifer species. If approved, the faux tree will be aligned with existing trees, which have a mature height of up to 80 feet. As the previous CUP has expired several years ago, the Planning Commission has requested to consider the following regarding the existing monopole design. Does the existing tower meet the community's design element and should the tower be redesigned into a faux conifer species? Some of the reasons to consider the redesign are shown. Also, the applicant was advised to propose a redesign, but is not proposing any new design elements. With that, the applicant submitted a response letter to the requested redesign and stated several reasons. The first was feasibility. The applicant stated the faux tree would create an unduly structural load. Staff concurs, however, the existing monopole has been located there for over 14 years, which is sufficient time to amortize the cost of its installation. Requesting more investment into the facility is appropriate if the Planning Commission wishes, because the approval period is for another 10 years. Another response stated alternative structure design would be more visually disruptive than the current design. As shown on the previous slides, the mature height is up to 80 feet and therefore the faux conifer would create a more natural and compatible look to the commercial center and adjacent park site. The third response stated that the project site is not large enough to accommodate the faux tree, based upon the additional area needed to accommodate the branching over the truck loading area. For a tree of this size, branching of 14 to 16 feet above grade is common. Therefore, a design that would require the branches to be at a height clearance for the largest vehicle using the loading area would be appropriate. The final response addresses unreasonable discrimination. The applicant states there are multiple communication facilities in Palmdale, visible from the public right away. Since 2012, all major communication facilities have been required to be designed as stealth facilities. As this is an expired CUP, the Planning Commission must consider this as a new facility. In addition, the advancement in design technology has allowed the opportunity to offer a more natural camouflage look. So the options for the Planning Commission are to adopt the resolution approving a redesign, adopt the resolution approving as is, continue this item, or deny the project. That concludes my presentation and available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alcaron. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward to the podium, state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak. No one is here to speak, okay. Well then.
Just us.
May I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close. I will second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, the public hearing on this item is now closed. Time for commissioner discussion. Thoughts on this?
I personally think that we, I kind of expressed this with the Marie Kerr Park thing, where I don't even notice those things anymore, I mean, they're just there, it's part of our society. And I just don't see, I don't know how much, I'm not 100% sure how much the cost of that would be, but personally, I'm good with it the way it is, as far as that goes.
I know that as a commission, over the last few years, we've tried very hard to stealth our cell towers, to make them not as obtrusive. We've come up with all kinds of creative and clever ideas, whether they were, our staff has done that, we don't come up with those ideas, but thank you staff for coming up with them. Water towers, five poles, trees here and there, trees are the hard ones, because they obviously are a fake tree. But I do believe that we do have kind of a responsibility to our community to not have ugly 60-foot-tall structures throughout it. We've also gone to the Slimline monopole that doesn't have the antennas on the outside, we've seen a few of those. My personal opinion is this is probably ugliest thing you could have, standing 60 feet tall in the community. And if the technology exists to stealth it and make it a little bit more aesthetically appealing, I would appreciate that.
I do have a question, can I ask?
You may ask staff now.
How long, how long will it take for these to reach that 30 to 8, that 60 to 80-foot height, the existing trees?
Well, they have a growth rate of 12 to 24 per year.
So one to two feet per year. And they're, how tall now? One line of these?
The pine trees?
The pine trees that line the driveway are 30 feet now
30 feet now.
And the diadors, the adjacent park, were just planted, it's literally about six feet tall.
So those don't count?
So, but we are talking potentially a 10-year
Well, that's, and that's what I'm thinking, which, at a foot a year, that's 10 more feet?
Yeah, so you're at 40 feet.
And the tower is 60 feet? So it's still gonna tower?
The growth rate is 12 to 24. The growth rate is 12 to 24, if it's a year.
12 to 24.
So it's two feet a year, over 10 years, that's another 20 feet. So this'll still stand a good
10 feet.
At least. It's 60 foot?
It would tower over either way. I mean, it's towering now, it would tower over green with branches or it would tower over
The question is what makes more sense, do you have a cell tower or do you have a gigantic tree in the middle of, a gigantic fake tree in the middle of everything? And either way, it's not. I'm sorry, I've never been a fan of these fake trees, I think it's so obvious that they're uphold, unless you put them in the middle of other trees, which this will not be. And looking at where the cell tower is now, it's just gonna be this giant fake tree in the middle of
Their desert image of it.
Yeah, we're looking at it here too. But, I mean, that's the thing, is it's going to be more than 10 years before those trees even get close to where that is. So while I am a proponent of the stealth, I prefer them being stealth. It's kind of hide that, hard to hide that out in the middle of nowhere. I mean, I just, I don't like not stealth it.
Is the Slimline design any option for this type of a pole?
Well, absolutely, the Planning Commission could continue the item and ask the staff to work with the applicant to go to a Slimline design. I would hesitate to recommend, to advise the Planning Commission to change it to that without the applicant being present to be able to address
Sure.
any technical issues that we may not be familiar with.
And the Slimline just kind of looks like a tall pole.
It looks like a tall pole, it's
This is a sample of an existing Slimline.
We've been doing a few of those, I know in the maintenance yard, we have one, and on Avenue S, across from the water district reclamation, we have one. They're a little bit less ugly. And I did go by that site, and it is poorly maintained, which leads me, gives me some concern as to whether the applicant is gonna follow, because I know that part of the conditions was to enclose some of the things that have been put up on the outside of the enclosure, because that's something that's very ugly. So I have a little bit of concern with the applicant following through on that as well.
What happens if they don't? What happens if they don't?
Well, their, the condition for it has expired.
Right.
So if the application is denied, or there's no action on it, then we would have to pursue code enforcement action to have it removed.
So, and what if it's approved and our station says they don't follow through with the conditions, then it's same thing, it has to
Same thing, maybe code enforcement.
Well, I would like to continue towards our trend of steffing, maybe not steffing as a
Giant pine tree.
but steffing in some way.
Well, I, in general, I agree, but in this case, what would you, how would you stealth this? In the middle of the desert, what are you gonna hide it as? Can't make a giant Joshua tree? You know, I
That's what I'm saying, a Slim, Slimline, without the antennas on the outside at least would make it less obnoxious. A light fixture for the park. Wow, there you go. I'm thinking now.
If we had a playfield there.
(laugh) Well, are there any Doggies play in that park.
Yeah.
Are there any other, I don't see any other, I guess there's a couple of them.
There are light fixtures there, that's just gigantic.
Chair, it looks like the applicant has arrived. Would you like to reopen the public hearing?
I personally think that'd be a good idea.
I think so. All right, then, may I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor of reopening the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing on this item is now reopened. If the applicant could please come forward, state your name, and you have three minutes to make a presentation.
My name's John Gugurabias, I'm here representing the applicant, and I'm also here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Since we asked him to come forward for our public hearing. I do have a question. Currently, when I went to look at it, I know some of the items are installed outside of the enclosed area, and I believe that the current CUP required that all of those be maintained inside of that. Is there a reason as to why that was done that way, why the CUP was not followed?
Well, this was an older project, I don't know the specifics of that, but that's a good question to ask. I can definitely touch base with my client and ask him how come that wasn't enclosed?
Okay. It just, yeah, it appears that some items have been installed outside of the, what's all supposed to be enclosed and hidden from public view for the most part, so.
And also, I'm not sure if that is even still a part of the lease area that, what was agreed upon, so I don't know what's beyond that, or if it's within the lease area, but that's a good question.
I was kind of hoping that you'd come up and talk and state your position about why you want to just leave it the way it is. I'm assuming, my assumption would be that's the way you want it.
Well, based on the report that was submitted, they did a structural analysis report, and to do the, to do the pole as a eucalyptus or stealth design, the current design is a slim design, so the weight wouldn't hold for that type of design, so that's a reason why they're steering with the same design that they still currently have.
On the weight, the way it's constructed right now, are you talking about the foundation can't hold any more weight, whatever allows now?
I don't know the exact specifics of the engineering, but from what I, from what I understand, of the amount of weight that would be put on the monopole, it cannot sustain it.
Can they redo the foundation, if we go back and ask?
That's an engineering question, and I could defer it to my client, and they can talk with their engineering staff, and we can get answers for you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, we talked about the monopole, the Slimline, right? And was there a reason not to do a more Slimline? Was that discussed?
Not to my understanding. Would you like to inquire on a slimmer design?
Well, not so much the slimmer design, but
Yeah, having the antennas inside of the enclosure is less obvious, is always a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, I believe. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second, I have a motion to second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is once again closed.
So, this just popped in my head, so, I mean, moving forward, any, any one of these has to be stealth. Is that correct?
That is kind of our direction, does not have to be, but
It seems like we don't bat an eye in this community when we see one of these humongous wind turbines going up, like the one at the prison that just all of a sudden popped up on SN State Lancaster, but we've got one out there by Lake Palmdale. And we don't, we don't try to stealth those out, it's just, it's just a fact of life that it's producing, producing energy and it's this massive piece of metal out in the middle of the desert. I'm all for, you know, moving forward, but to take, you know, just kind of grandfathering in this particular one, even though the CUP expired, I mean, I could kind of go either way personally, but I just, that's, that's my thought, it's like, it's there. For what it's worth, nobody from the community seems to have shown up to object to it. And like I said, it doesn't really bother me personally, and, and like one of the other commissioners stated, I mean, when you see the fake Christmas, big Christmas tree, that gets your attention personally, so. But I can go either way, I just, just throwing that out there as a thought, if, you know, to move that direction perhaps.
I think one of the blessings of having a timeframe on these is that they are termed at 10 years at this point. I do believe in the past, we shortened that time on an extension as well, so we do have that option, which is what I believe we did at Marie Kerr Park, but I'm not 100% sure. We did it somewhere.
No, that was, that was one that was in a rural area that wasn't developed, so staff
I think at Marie Kerr, we made it match, we did go shorter, because we made it match the lease on
Correct, the lease time, because we, that was on public land.
So that is also an option. I just, my concern is as technology improves and as designs improve, and somebody comes up with something brilliant, to put 10 more years on something that is an eyesore, in my opinion, is excessive. And if the technology does exist to make it a little bit more appealing, then we should try to move in that direction.
I would like to make one point about, this is a new application, I mean, it's an existing facility, but that approval has expired, so it's essentially
It is considered
a new facility. I generally recommend that if you're providing a CUP with some time, that you give at least 10 years for cell towers.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Well, I think for what it's worth, that in general, I would prefer to see these stealthed, especially if they're in a residential-type area. We did it out at Drytown, we've done it in a number of different areas where there's a lot of people, and it's an obvious cell tower in the middle of everything. This one's a little harder for me, because there's nothing to really stealth it with, nothing really fits. And even putting the giant tree, the trees around it are not going to even come close if they grow at the fastest rate of growth for the entire 10 years. They might be within 10 feet of the cell tower, so it might not stick out as bad in 10 years when the CUP expires and we'll be doing this again. So this one, in, in general, I think we should stealth them where we can, but I think that requiring stealth for the sake of stealth isn't necessarily always a good thing. So for me, the question becomes, is the, is a tree, a fake huge giant tree, better than a pole, better than what exists? than a pole, better than what exists out there right now? And, and does it, the trade-off, the cost to the applicant to do that? And, and so that's, that's kind of what I'm considering is, will it really stealth it all that much more if we make it a giant pole, rather than an obvious giant cell tower? Well, people wonder, what's that big pole out there for? As opposed to, well, there's a cell tower there. So I think in this case, I don't see any, any other way to stealth it than this giant tree that's gonna be fake and stick out anyway. I'm sorry, I really am against these fake trees, I really don't like them. If all the other trees were that size, and it would kind of blend in, I, I'd say go for the tree. But they're not going to, it's just gonna be a giant, a little tree, fake tree, so.
Any further discussion?
Is there one?
Anybody willing to make a motion on this item?
Nobody's real thrilled with this, so.
It is within our ability to continue the item.
Take option three.
If we so choose.
Well, but continue it for what purpose is the question?
So that we could get answers from the applicant that we just asked him, and that perhaps they would come up with some different concept, perhaps it would be the inside-the-radar design, or, I mean, because we did ask him a couple of questions, if he was willing to get some information.
If it's the planning commission's desire to continue this item, I would recommend that we get verbal approval from the applicant to continue it, to make sure that we don't run afoul of any permit timelines.
Is there a date on this one, Mr. Bruce, do you know?
There is a special, what's the term, tracking ticking? Time clock.
Time clock.
Shot clock. The shot clock on, on cell facilities.
Yes.
That is different than the Perpetual Streamlining Act. So, we're well within that time period right now, but if we continue it to a date uncertain, we could run afoul of that, but if the applicant concurs to the continuous, then we don't run afoul.
Okay, thank you.
So Matt, option two is just to leave it alone?
Correct.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion, I move to adopt resolution number PC-2018-2023 approving the request to reapprove an expired major telecommunications facility and find that the project will not result in any changes to the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration.
All right, I have a motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? All right, I will call for the voice vote.
Chair Nauman?
No.
Vice Chair French?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Alvera?
I abstain.
I'm sorry?
Abstain.
You're abstaining?
Okay. Can I abstain on this?
Well, it, Pat, I mean, you can abstain, there's a couple of issues here. One is, for purposes of calculating the vote, it depends on whether your abstention is for a actual conflict of interest, otherwise, the abstention is just for, I don't know what the reason, the abstention is, I mean, generally, you have an obligation to vote on an item and participate, unless there's some reason that you want to abstain, generally, that's if there's a, like, financial conflict, which would require you to abstain, or if you feel that there's, there's some reason that you couldn't provide a fair hearing.
The reason why I'm abstaining is because I'm not too familiar with the issue at hand.
Okay.
That's the only reason why, other than that, I will support what's on, on the agenda, but I am not too familiar with the whole.
Okay, well, and in that instance, it would be, it would be a 2-1 vote, and you'd need, you'd need a majority of three to pass that, that resolution, so the resolution fails.
Okay.
So you have a couple of options. Someone can make another motion for either the other resolution, or to continue the item, or to deny the project.
All right, I motion to continue the item. Do we need to get the applicant's approval for that?
Yes, please.
All right, John, if you could please, would we have room to continue to our next, I saw our plan for next month, is it too soon for that?
We may not have time to get the answers.
Okay, so-
And the agenda out.
So-
So, we did it to either the September meeting, or to a date uncertain, and then once we resolve the issue with the applicant, we would schedule it for back for hearing.
All right, so, is the applicant amenable to continuing this item to a date uncertain?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I do motion to continue the item to a date uncertain.
I second that. Any further discussion on that? All right, then we'll call for a voice vote on continuing the item to a date uncertain.
Chair Nauman?
Yes.
Vice Chair French?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Alvera?
Yes.
All right, so that item shall be continued to a date uncertain. That brings us to item 10 on our agenda, staff communications.
Well, as you see before you, we have a significant agenda for the next meeting, and I apologize, but I think there's one item that we're going to get on here that wasn't listed, so it's gonna be five items, and that is an amendment to the Audubon specific plan that we are currently processing, so, and there are fairly technical-
Yeah.
...items for a change, so it's gonna be something to really chew on, we'll be having to pull together the packet for you.
Yeah, it's gonna be a big one, huh?
It's gonna be a big one. And that's it for staff communications on my side.
Thank you. Mr. Doran, anything from our attorney?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, planning commission communications. All right, I would like to welcome Angel Alvera to our commission, and you got off kind of easy with the skinny little packet next month. Mm-hmm, it's gonna be big, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, that being said, I shall adjourn this meeting to our Thursday, August 9th meeting at 7:00 PM, which will once again take place in here, hopefully for the final round, if they-
Take your cross.
Thank you all for coming.